Right, so I see that we are past the RS7 actually, so I will call this meeting to order. Would you all please join us in pledging allegiance to our nation's flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, the first item on the agenda is citizens' concerns. Are there any citizens' concerns? See a lot of citizens, but not a lot of concerns, which is good. So, we'll go to the next item and reports. And the first item is one that we enjoy every year, which are book awards. Dr. Lally, would you like to speak on that?
Yes, today we have Katie Cleggitt with us, and she is going to introduce the students and the awards.
Welcome.
So, the first award we have today is the Smith College Book Award. And the Smith College Book Award is given based on academic achievement, leadership skills, and concern for others. And so today we're going to connect these two. Okay, so the second award is the St. Michael's College Book Award. The St. Michael's College Book Award for academic achievement, which is social conscious recognizes outstanding students who demonstrate a commitment to volunteerism and leadership in his or her community service endeavors. The college's founders had a special commitment to serving others as an extension of their Catholic faith. Today, the Book Award represents just one way in which St. Michael's fulfills its mission to better the human condition by honoring those who demonstrate the true spirit of volunteerism. So, there are two awards today. One is for Mr. Jonathan Valeros, not here, and the other is for the youngers here.
Maybe the school committee could have a picture taken too with you?
Sure.
Thank you.
There's one more award I'd like to bring up.
I don't know if you can say it or not.
All right, so the final award is the Harvard Book Award. The Harvard Prize Book is an achievement award for the Harvard Alumni Association, awarded to the outstanding high school student in the next to graduating class, so the junior year, who displays excellent scholarship and high character combined with achievements in other fields. And that's today for Ms. Carol Espero.
And I just want to add, in addition to our personal thanks, that it's a great accomplishment in the town of Holbrook to have these prestigious book awards given to such fine scholars in honor of their achievements, and we're very, very proud of you all. Thank you. All right, I'm going to ask the auditor to please join us. And welcome to the school committee again. Good to see you. Please have a seat.
Thank you very much.
And if you'd just introduce yourself to all the members of the committee.
My name is Erica Lucier. I'm a manager with Malans and Heath, with an auditing firm that performs the audit for the town of Holbrook every year. And included in the annual audit is the school's financials and a couple other reports specific to the school that we're engaged to perform. And I'm prepared to kind of walk through those various reports this evening.
Would you please do that?
Yep, glad you got the fun stuff out of the way before I put everybody to sleep here. In terms of the annual financial statements, the school's figures are a few numbers within the town's financial statements. However, during the course of the audit, we are looking at the school's figures through various trend analysis, budget analysis, as well as testing the internal controls. We do several internal control testings with regards to vendor transactions as part of the overall audit. So, the school's transactions would be a part of that, as well as any other department, as well as payroll. We do payroll testing as part of our internal controls, and that would include all town departments, including the school as well.
Do you have a copy for the members to peruse?
I have one copy, my copy of the annual financial statements. And I'm not sure, do you guys have copies of the other reports at all?
I don't think we do unfortunately.
Okay, all right.
We could get them if you want them.
Well, of course, we should have had them, I would think. They are the kind of...
I'm not going to walk through the financial statements with you, because again, there are just a few numbers in there, but wanted to focus more on the areas that relate to the school department. The first, actually, as part of the audit, we don't just look at the numbers, but as I mentioned, we looked at internal controls and policies and procedures to determine whether they're operating effectively. And out of that, we have issued a management letter for the town where we document areas where we feel that improvements could be made to strengthen operating efficiencies and internal controls. Again, the management letter relates to the town as a whole. There are a few specific items that do address items that would be related to the school department. One of them is, and it's not specific to the school, but generally all town departments, and that's to require dual signatures on all departmental turnover forms that are brought over to the treasurer. And that's just making sure that there's documentation of the preparer and the reviewer to make sure that there's oversight with regards to those turnovers. There was another comment in the management letter relating to the payroll testing. As I mentioned, we select a number of transactions, 40 in all for the town. Of that, 15 related to the school department. And what we noted was that there are employee action forms that are being maintained for all the staff, which is great, but they just didn't contain a signature of approval of the pay rates. So, we just recommend that those forms have a documented approval of the pay rates for the individuals.
How would that be accomplished, through change of the form?
Nope, there's actually a line on the form for the signature.
I see, and it just wasn't carried through?
Yep. And then the final comment that relates to the school in the management letter, and this is actually a standard comment that we've issued for all of our communities, and it's not, it doesn't relate to the 2015 year, but it's more of a heads up for 2016. And that's with regards to the changes in the Single Audit Act. The single audit is, it requires towns that have federal expenditures in excess of $500,000 to have what's called a single audit, where we look at the federal programs. And I'll go through that report in a little bit. But in 2016, they're going to be changing the Single Audit Act, where they're going to be requiring more documentation of internal controls and policies and procedures relating to a various number of things, like cash management, subrecipient monitoring, equipment management. So, there is an item in here that's more of a heads up for 2016. We have provided some examples to the town with regards to policies and procedures that can be implemented to help with this comment. And again, this isn't necessarily just specific to the school. However, the school historically is the department that has the federal awards that would require the single audit, so...
Before we go into the future issue that you're about to bring up, with regard to the past documentation that you brought up, was there any sort of management response letter that had been given when you brought those up? Or does that typically just come up at the end, and you don't ask them for a response?
There is usually a response that's included in the management letter. The management letter that addressed the payroll had several other items within it. The school was one piece of that comment.
So, with regard to the schools, did you respond to that in terms of management letters?
I had not seen that actually.
You haven't seen it?
No.
And the town's response was that the town has decentralized personnel records, and the approval of hiring forms or letters from either the school committee or Board of Selectmen will be updated in the future.
Do you recommend if that, your report is given to the town, that it should, and it contains some things from the schools, that it would be a good practice to send a copy to the schools?
Yes, I would agree. Yep, that would be done in the future.
Okay.
Usually, we distribute it to the town manager and the town accountant, who are the two main people that we deal with during the course of the audit. And they usually solicit responses from the various departments, whether it's the treasurer's department, ECUW. So, we will make sure that in the future that is distributed.
I appreciate that, because I'm sure that meant a lot that Trish hadn't even seen it.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
The other report that relates to the school department, and this is an agreed-upon procedure, it's outside of the realm of the town's audit. It is, it's not an audit, it's an agreed-upon procedure, so we don't have an opinion on it. But what it relates to is the school's end-of-year report. The school is required to submit to the state every year what's called an end-of-year report, where it presents the expenditures, revenue, transportation, budget information relative to the school department. The state uses that information for various statistical things in terms of determining the per-person allocations. We performed the agreed-upon procedures with regards to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, or DESE, in accordance with their compliance requirements. And this report outlines areas where there were non-compliance. There were three items that were issued, I'm sorry, four. There were three items. The first one was to properly report grant revenue, and this was merely an amount that was reported in an incorrect column. It was, the kindergarten development grant revenues were reported in one column that is for undistributed items versus a sped item, and it should have been recorded in a sped column. Again, it was just a matter of wrong column, right line.
Right.
Another item that was brought up in one of the findings was similar to that. A figure was reported in the correct column, but on the wrong line. It was just a line right below it. All of these items with regards to the actual end-of-year report submission, amendments have been filed, so those items have been addressed. The other item that has not been addressed, and this was a repeat from the prior year, was to execute a written agreement between the town and the school with regards to the indirect costs.
Right.
So, those are costs for fringe benefits, municipal expenses, et cetera. And I think that's a work in progress.
Right.
So, those are the items relating to the end-of-year report.
Mm-hmm.
The other item that I was talking about is the single audit, which is, again, as I mentioned, the audit of federal awards. And the town has, in the past, had expenditures over the $500,000, so it's required a single audit. The two programs that we tested this year was the special education cluster, which includes your entitlement grant, as well as early education grants, as well as the school lunch cluster. There was one finding with regards to both of those grants, and it was with regards to the time and effort certifications for employees that work full-time on a grant-funded org. You need to have certification that your time was specifically for that entity. So, whether it's sped cost, if you are 100% sped, you need to certify semi-annually that your work was solely for the purpose of the special education. If you are part-time charged to the grant, you're required to have a monthly sign-off. There was documentation that these individuals were charging the correct programs. However, there wasn't an actual certification that was being maintained. That is something that I understand is going to be addressed in the future.
Mm-hmm.
The other item that we did during the course of 2015, because it was mentioned in last year's management letter. I know last year, when I was here, I was talking about the student activity funds, and how in 2015, the DESE, or the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, was going to require student activity funds to have an annual audit. This was a requirement as part of the Mass General Law when you accept the provisions for student activity funds. However, in that law, it said, "in accordance with the DESE guidelines." Well, they never had guidelines, so they weren't enforcing that. They came out in 2015 with guidelines in order to be able to audit according to that. So, during 2015, the town was required to have an annual audit of the student activity funds. During 2015, we audited the largest student activity, which is the junior and senior high school. And there were a couple items that resulted from that review. The first is to update the student activity procedures. There are certain items that are outlined in the DESE guidelines that the school did not have procedures over. And that is to require an annual school committee approval of all student activity accounts. So, annually reviewing the accounts that are out there and making sure that you approve of them. Also, any new accounts that are going to be established for, whether it's the high school or the other schools, if you're going to be establishing an account, that needs to be approved as well. And when we're talking account, we're not just talking about a specific bank account, but the individual sub-accounts, like the drama club, the chess club, those types of activities.
Is there a particular part of the school year that you recommend that be done in?
I guess at the beginning, yeah, at the beginning of the school year.
Mm-hmm.
The other item was to establish a policy for the remediation of deficit account balances that aren't caused by temporary timing issues. We did not notice any during the course of our review. However, there should be a policy in place so that if that does occur, you have proper action in place to take care of those items.
Now, was there a, was there a response to that by the administration?
Yes, yep, it said that the school, public schools will update its policies and procedures as stated in the recommendation.
Okay.
And these responses, we have not audited the responses, so I'm not sure where that stands at this point.
Okay.
The second item was to review the authorized limit in the checking accounts. There's a limit that is established for the individual checking accounts that are maintained by the principals. And the limit for the high school was $10,000. And during one month under our review, it was the month of November, it exceeded that amount. So, we recommend that the school committee review, again, the limits to make sure that they're still applicable and that they're, you know, right, or correct. And then also that the balances be reviewed on a monthly basis to ensure that they are maintaining the, within the limit. The third item is to improve the internal controls over the submission of reporting. The policies and procedures require that there be periodic submission of accounting to the school business manager. And we noticed that during the time of our review, that there weren't any actual periodic submissions taking place. So, we recommend that quarterly, a copy of the reconciliation between the sub-accounts, like I mentioned, you know, the drama club, all the individual accounts, that there be a reconciliation between those and the bank statements, and that be signed off on by the preparer and reviewer, and submitted quarterly to the school business manager for review. The fourth item is to maintain support for reconciliations. There was support for the various months of reconciliations. However, one month, there was a reconciling item of about $1,215. However, the, at the time the reconciliations had been done, the reports weren't maintained. So, when we tried to go back and recreate what the variance was, we weren't able to obtain information to support what that variance was. However, going forward into the next months, we did look beyond that period. The reconciling item did clear. So, we're just recommending that at the time the reconciliations are done, that a printout, whether it's kept in paper in a binder or scanned electronically, be maintained, because sometimes things get backposted in the system, and, you know, there goes your reconciliation.
Right.
So, just maintaining that documentation. The fifth item was to improve internal controls over student activity fund receipts. This is with regards to receipts remitted to the treasurer. The policies say that they should be remitted within one week to the town treasurer. And we noted that that was not necessarily always happening. So, we just recommend that all receipts be submitted to the treasurer, the town treasurer, within one week. To improve, the sixth item is to improve internal controls over the student activity fund disbursements. During the course of the student activity fund review, we looked at specific vendor transactions. And we noticed that there were payments that included sales tax. So, we want to make sure that they do not include sales tax. One of the 10 checks that we had selected did not contain an actual signature, authorization signature. And then also, equipment and materials for one of the disbursements had been shipped to the advisor's home, not the school department, which you will see that sometimes when people are doing orders online. But we want to make sure that all items are shipped to the school department and not to advisors' homes. I'm getting close here. Number seven was to comply with the Holbrook Public Schools Student Activity Funds procedures for graduated class accounts. The procedures, the student activity fund procedures say that any graduated classes, that the funds remaining should be remitted to the incurring senior class. However, we noted that graduated classes were being moved to an inactive account. So, we just, you know, recommend that that be reviewed, and that the graduating class accounts be closed out and moved to the next year's senior class. Item number eight was to comply with the public schools procedures for inactive accounts. The public schools procedures is any account that is inactive for three years should be closed out. However, during the course of our review, we noticed that there were two accounts that had been inactive for over three years. So, we just recommend that those be monitored on an annual basis to make sure that any inactive accounts be closed. And then the last item is with regards to student travel. And this is to require statements of final financial accountability for all travel funded through the student activity accounts. So, this would be after an activity has taken place, whether it's a field trip or, you know, a larger travel event, that a formal offer, or form be submitted with the accountability, saying what the total expenses were, what the total amount collected was. Currently, that is not a process, so we recommend that the school establish such a procedure and a form to go along with that, to document the final accountability. So, that is the, that is the student activity fund audit. I believe that is all of the various reports that relate to the school.
Well, first, I want to thank you for your thoroughness in reviewing these. We appreciate it. It gives us a window into areas that we need to check, and we always look forward to that. If everything was right, we'd be worried. So, I'm glad that you pointed these things out. Are there any questions from any members of the school committee regarding this?
No, just, I may have some after I see the actual report.
Right.
Yeah.
It'd be a lot easier to have.
I do want to say in the future, that has to be a given, that we have the reports when the, before the auditor has come.
Yes, I don't usually get the town reports that even mention the school.
Well, that is a defect, so I think that has to be rectified.
Yeah, we'll make sure of that. That's an easy fix.
Good.
When was the report issued?
Which one? The student activity fund report?
Yeah, in the town, when was it?
Yep, so the student activity fund report was issued in October of 2015.
Okay.
The town financial statements and management letter were issued, it was either March 30th or 31st. I can get you that date specifically. It was actually the 28th. So, that would relate to the financial statements and the management letter. The end-of-year report was very recently, May 26th. And the single audit was also the 28th of March.
Interesting.
So, these were the financial statements for last school year, not just past.
Right, that's right.
It's always difficult when you're wrapping up one fiscal year and presenting on the prior one, so...
Well, thank you very much.
Yep.
That was very informative.
Thank you very much for having me. Thank you.
All right, our next item on the agenda is the superintendent's, no, it's the school resource officer. But where is the actual?
This?
Let me see it.
The agreement?
Yeah, the agreement itself, good. Has this been distributed to the committee?
Yes.
Okay, so you've all seen this memorandum of understanding?
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any questions about the memorandum of understanding in the committee?
Or the job description?
This is, or the job, but why don't we start one, we'll start with the memorandum of understanding. And I believe Chief Smith has seen this, and you've seen it, Dr. Lally, and you both recommend this memorandum of understanding, is that correct?
Yes. Maybe Chief Smith can...
Yeah, please come on up, Chief. So, well, I think this is very thorough, and it seems to have hit a lot of the items that, as a school, it seems to have struck a nice balance between what the school needs and what this officer would be doing. Don't you agree, Chief?
It does, yes.
Are there any questions about it? If not, I would entertain a motion that we accept the memorandum of understanding and authorize, I guess it says the superintendent to execute it. All those in favor? That passes. Now, we'll look at the job description. That's under the purview of the school committee, as you know, on job descriptions. Again, you've all received a copy of it. Did you have a question, John, about it?
I did, I actually had a few questions.
Go ahead.
The first one was with regard to the responsibilities that the resource officer, is it a full-time position for that role?
Yes, when he's not here at the school, when the school's not in session, he'll be the juvenile detective officer.
Okay.
You know.
And will his duties be limited to those areas?
Yes.
Primarily the juvenile?
All juvenile issues.
For the school?
Yep.
And will the officer be carrying his revolver on his person in the school?
Yes.
I just wanted to know, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. And would it ever be possible in the future for him to provide instruction to the students, teach a class?
That's what we were hoping that, for different things, like maybe the helmet safety, and we were hoping, you know, there'd be certain assemblies that he might take on and want to instruct kids.
I can think of a lot of areas where he would have some expertise to share.
He's done classes here for criminal law before and stuff like that, so...
Great.
Scott's been with the department for 10 years. He's been a detective for, for...
We're going to get right into that in a minute. Okay, so why don't we go to the job description? Is there a motion to accept the job description?
So, we'll check.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? All right. So, now, we will turn to the person. And you have a person in mind. Can you please present him to the committee?
Yes, we had an interview process. There was five of us, and we had two candidates come forward. One was Sam Sterling, and that was Scott Glover. Scott has been with the department since 2006. He's been a detective for the last four years.
Come on up here.
He's handled most of the incidents at the school anyways. He's always up here.
Looks like you're going to be up here a little bit more.
He does a great job.
I mean, I have full confidence in him. He'll be issued his own car, take-home car. He'll respond to the school in the morning, stay here all along, school's in session, and then when it's over. When school's not in session, he'll come back to the station. When school's not in session, he'll come back to the station, do juvenile work, or any instance that happened that he'd follow up on, be summer term, something like that.
Well, you come highly recommended from both the superintendent and the chief of police, and that means a lot to me. Well, are there any questions?
I think it's a great partnership.
It is, it's, it's well overdue. Everything that happens in society starts in the school. And you can stop it there and call a pardon.
Now, are we required to vote on the hire, or is that?
No, but I, I think maybe a photo op would be nice because we have, we're lucky to have the media here today.
I think that's a great idea, and I, and first of all, I want to congratulate you. Why don't we do that? Why don't we all get up and have a photo op? Thank you. Congratulations. All righty.
I think we just want to sign the document and then, um.
Yeah.
They probably might to get moving. I think you have the two right.
Yeah, I do, I do.
They have a little, right there in front. I think it's under the job description?
Yep, yep. Okay, so we'll start with the memorandum of understanding.
So, one's for you and one's for us.
Great, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, what school start, August?
Well, the end of, the last couple of weeks in August.
Teachers are the twenty-sixth and students twenty-ninth.
They'll be ready to go.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. I am going to take out of order at the suggestion of nine earnest students here about a Washington DC trip. So, could they please come up? This is under an action item. It says, I see, New York City trip, is that the DC trip?
It's New York City.
It's New York City, oh, okay.
It's a senior trip.
Okay, fine. Oh, I had District of Columbia on mine. Okay, it does say DC. Okay, anyway, let's, New York City, just as well, the first capital.
I have copies of the flyers we're giving out, if you want to take a look at it. I'm here, I'm the class advisor for the class of two thousand and seventeen. And I have my officers here as well. Nora's my president. Deidre's the vice president. Joan, the secretary. And Danielle, the treasurer. So, we've organized this trip to leave Friday, November eighteenth at seven AM, return to Holbrook at Sunday night around eight PM. We're going to head over to the nine eleven museum, Broadway play, tour, guided tour, Madame Tussauds museum, and a cruises to Ellis Island and Statue of Liberty.
Now, aren't there forms that we require to be filled out on these? Are they here?
Yeah, they're right.
They're here, okay, great. I just didn't see them. What's the ratio of, you know, adults to students?
It's complimented, ten students to one adult. So, if we had thirty students go, we'd have three adults.
Great. So, they have their choice of room, too, it looks like.
Um, right, but, so, most people are looking at the five thirty night for a person. And we also have a fundraiser going on in September to try to further cause for the kids.
Oh, very nice. Well, it looks like you're staying in New Jersey, and I believe the US Supreme Court has said that the Statue of Liberty is in New Jersey, even though it's on the New York City list here. I, I think most people would think of it with New York and not New Jersey, and I'll do deference to the God state. Oh, you're touring Grand Central Station, that'll be interesting.
Yeah.
So, the, are there any questions about the seniors tour? Would I like to entertain a motion to adopt the senior tour?
So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
No further discussion, all those in favor? Congratulations, have a great time. Okay, and thank you for the heads up about that. Okay, so now, we're going to go back to the superintendent for her report, Dr. Lally.
Okay, the first one is the presentation of a plaque to Woody Conrad. Julie Hamilton would like to make the speech presentation, and I will, and Mr. George, if you'll present the plaque. Mr. Conrad?
So, I was delighted when Dr. Lally asked me and allowed me to say a few words about my dear friend and colleague, Forrest Conrad, known lovingly as Woody in the school learning community here. And, and Woody will be leaving us at the end of the month, he'll be retired. So, I wanted to say a few words on behalf of my good friend and our colleague. Woody started his work in the Holbrook Public Schools in the summer of two thousand and six. And throughout the past decade of his work, he's accomplished many great feats in the area of technology. His innovative spirit and love for providing all of our students with hands-on opportunities to experience technology in the classroom led to smart boards in many of our rooms, media cards, tablets, and educational software that greatly enhanced not only educational experiences for our students, but fostered high levels of student engagement. Because what child does not love technology? As the only member of a one-man department, Woody had to wear many hats here in Holbrook. From keeping outdated service up and running to downloading educational software for troubleshooting our computers and our issues, uploading student data, EPIM, SIMs, building schedules placed onto X two, and so, so much more. To say that Woody will be missed is a great understatement. We wish you a long and happy retirement with your loving family and your wife. And Woody always ended every email he ever sent to us in district with a quote. So, Woody, Robert Kennedy once said, "The purpose of life is to contribute in some way to making things better." And there is no doubt that Woody, through his hard work and dedication to the students, teachers, and staff of the Holbrook Public Schools, has left his mark on our little world. You have made a difference in our lives, and you will be missed.
Well, I have pleasure on behalf of Holbrook School Committee to present to you Forrest Conrad. Any grateful appreciation of your ten years of outstanding service to the students of the Holbrook Public Schools. I must confess that I still don't know the, my number on the. But that's not your fault, it's mine. And congratulations and have a very happy time.
Thank you, Woody.
Thanks, Woody.
Say, come on, say.
You know what, I'll miss the, the staff. I mean, the staff here is absolutely fantastic. You know, it's just, everyone has been very accommodating. They understood the limitations of what we were able to do. And I think we were able to do a lot, really, a whole lot. From the day I started, the differences were tremendous. I will say that when I hold departmental meetings, they're very brief. Hardly ever any discord. And, gee, what else can I say? Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Please continue, Dr. Lally.
The new school planning update. So, I have a few things, just, we had a meeting before this with the maintenance group. And that was a piece of this. We were talking about the transition from this, these buildings to the new building. There are a lot of pieces of that, of the components to the move, to the opening of the school, that are really aspects in the school building project. So, they, the consultants are scheduled, are hired by Flansburgh for each aspect of the job. So, there's a tech consultant, there's a food service consultant, a maintenance consultant. We have all these different consultants. And they're all scheduled to begin a piece of that project at a certain time so that when we open the new school, it's all coordinated for that. So, for example, we're, you know, most people are really excited to, are want to, are anxious about the boxes and how to, you know, when are you going to get to pack up? But that's scheduled, you know, and I, I asked about that early on, but I know it's, it's scheduled nearer, you know, the, after the, in the last year, nearer midway in the last year. Because when you pack up those boxes, they have to go somewhere. And there's nowhere to put them in the schools that you're in right now because it'd be in the way of students. But also, you're using those materials still. So, it's kind of pushed off, so there's, it's, you know, we, they hire that consultant that does all of that at the end. So, that's just an example of why it, it goes in phases. They've been, most of them have already been in on the project to talk about the different components. For example, the technology consultant has been in, has spoken with Woody. We're going to have the consultant come in again because we'll have a new tech director, or we have a new tech director, but they'll be announced soon because he has to give notice. But that piece will, will be coordinated through the project because there is consultants. So, some of the things that have happened so far, we have a tech committee, as you know, with administrators and teachers. And we've been visiting different schools, brand-new schools. So, they're either one or two years old, some just opened. And we're looking at what technology is, is out there to go from pre-K to twelve. Because that might look different, obviously, in the elementary classes from what it would look like in high school. So, this group is made up of someone from each level so that they can see how that technology fits for the grades that they represent, but also how the transition will be from, let's say, fifth grade to sixth grade. You know, will that be smooth if you're going from one device to another? So, that's still, we just actually went last week or the week before to a couple of schools. So, we'll be meeting again in the fall and try and, you know, get all the ideas together and hopefully coming up with what they recommend. And they will go back to their schools and talk about that to the other teachers and see how that fits with what people have in mind and for the instruction and how that will be integrated. And then, some decisions will have to be made. You don't buy the technology usually until closer, you know, so you get the newest, the latest, and the greatest. So, it would be, you know, during the next school year. Also, when we were out looking at technology, it was hard not to notice the furniture. So, a lot of the, the committee was looking at furniture in the different schools. So, obviously, the levels, you know, the different furniture and the different levels was important to each of, of the members. And that is something that, there's going to be a furniture kickoff meeting, just organizational, coming up in July. And that's just going to be to plan out where we're going to visit and who's going to be on the visiting team. And then, usually, people go out and, you know, this small group goes out and looks at furniture, and then samples come back to the school so that teachers and students can try out the furniture. Because, you know, so, somebody's already expressed that they like the, the semicircle tables. So, that, so that person, you know, is going to be happy because we'll obviously bring that back. There's also some kidney-shaped ones that fit like puzzles that we've seen. And so, these pieces will be brought back to schools so that both teachers and kids can try them out. And there'll be different chairs, so there's, there's a variety of, of pieces that people will be able to try out, even lunchroom cafeteria tables. But also, I, I just remember the, when I last did this, we had chairs like this. We had, I think we had fifty different types of chairs for people to have at his or her desk. And it was very difficult because people, you know, they were all, they were down there trying them out all the time. And people ended up coming up with two choices. So, it really worked out well. And I think people then could pick one or the other, and it worked out so that, you know, we could just order those. It was not a different chair for everybody because that wouldn't work, we wouldn't get a good price on it. So, that'll, that'll happen next, during the school year next year. What else is coming up? Ken Kovacs, the, the lead architect on the project, is going to be here on the first day of school for teachers. And so, that'll be part of our presentation on the first day. Ken's going to do an update, he's going to be talking about the timeline, the schedule for the, the project, how this is going to roll out. And he's going to be able to show, obviously, the, the school would be in a, you know, more complete segment at that point. So, he, he'll be able to show us recent pictures. And some people have already taken tours, but, you know, that was earlier on, so we could probably get some more tours going for people.
Are there any questions for Dr. Lally and what she's said so far?
Are you done, I have questions for you?
Okay. Dr. DeMello is starting a middle school committee. So, she's already started that, they're planning for the new, because you're going from a junior high to a middle school. So, there are, these are the pieces that, you know, there's lots of little pieces that go into it. Even though middle school, taking that on is not a little piece, but there are all these pieces that have to be looked at and planned for the opening of the new school. I know with.
Sorry, was that, did you say that was school council that she's forming, or?
No, a committee, I'm sorry, did I say?
Middle school.
Middle school, yeah.
Middle school.
Middle school committee, so that they can look at different options. Teaming is very popular, so that's always a consideration, but there's others, other, you know, designs out there for middle school. And it has to be able to work into the high school. So, it's kind of nice that you can coordinate that, and we'll be in the same building. So, even the pre-K to five, you know, coordinating with that is going to be kind of a, a nice flow. At the beginning of the year, we're hoping, and I know Mike Bolger is always talking about cleaning out the rooms because we are going to need to do a lot of purging. And I think that there's an orderly way to do that if you finish the first term and you, you know, you're not going to use those materials again. You can put those aside and throw out the things you really don't want to use, you're never going to use in that, for that subject area at that time. And so, we'll get some of that cleaned out before the, the big crunch comes to pack boxes. And I think some people have done it already. Mike, there's been a lot of cleaning out at some schools.
There's been some. Looking for more.
Looking for more, yes. And we're going to need to, because the, all of the furniture is going to be new. The file cabinets will be new, so there's, the old stuff isn't coming with us. You know, some people have a favorite chair, I know, but we need to get the new stuff in there, and it needs to be, you know, we need to get rid of the, the things that are just not planned in the new school. And then, at some point during the year, the principals will have to look at the assigning of classrooms. And that's a, I think that's a big process because that's where, you know, if you're going to move boxes, they, people have to know where they're going. So, they're going to have to, to really look at that and kind of plan it out because as we know, the junior, senior high school, or it'll be the middle school, high school, there will not be individual rooms for each teacher. They will have to share some. So, that means that there's going to have to be a lot of that coordination planned out during the year. The elementary schools really don't have to worry about that because they will probably have a classroom. There's also training that goes on besides the technology, which is a general piece for everybody. There are systems that need to be, that everybody needs to be trained on. Even the keying system is a big deal for, you know, everybody in the building because there will be certain rooms that you have to access with a different type of card. So, all of that, we're going to need a lot of training, and that will be probably before we go into the school, so maybe at the end of the school year next year. That, you know, that should be ready for us. And the, the combination planning for the JFK in the south, I think Mallory would like to speak about that? Or she will be happy to speak about that, they go ahead. Yes, we'll come up here, yeah.
Yeah, have a seat, Mallory.
As, um, Dr. Lally said, I think next year is a critical year for not only the whole district, but in particular, the two elementary schools, because as we stand now, we are separate. Um, and we need to be aligning things, and we already have started that process. Michelle and I, as you know, started PBAS this year, which shares the same language. So you're seeing the same language of expectations at both schools when you walk in, you see the posters are the same. The curriculum right now, we do have curriculum maps and, um, scope and sequences, K to six. So now we can continue to use those to refine best practices and things like that. So we, the ball is rolling, next year, we need to continue it. Um, so I, it's been proposed that Steph be co-principal. Um, and with that would come, we've already had many conversations about what needs to happen, um, for students, for staff, um, for next year. Um, joining the two school councils is something that we've discussed, that way we can start aligning the handbooks, um, have conversations about what, you know, a new report card may look like for, you know, K to five, or if we're breaking it up into two separate ones. Um, school improvement plans, these are all things, you know, pieces to the puzzle that need to be discussed, and the conversations have already started. Um, you know, making sure that the, the staff meetings are aligned, so that way, when we move in, everyone's on the same page and it's, you know, a very fluid transition. So, I don't know if you're looking for anything specific, but that's kind of, some of the conversations have already been had in this summer between myself, Stephanie and Kathy, who will be filling in for me when I take my return and leave, will be... We have a lot of work to do to make sure that we're ready to go for the new year, because the, moving into the new building is 2017, but there's still next year, that, you know.
Okay, so, so let's, let's take some questions, are there any questions?
I have some.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, so, you know, in terms of the planning and the transition, because everything's gonna happen next year. So is there a month-by-month, like, overall plan where you know each month you're gonna, you'll have to have-
That timeline?
Yeah, you'll have to have accomplished certain things. For example, you know, determination of transportation needs, or school hours, or, I, I don't know. I'm, there's a lot of things that-
Right.
I, like, when I look at things, if I see the whole thing and I say, well, by October, they're gonna have a decision on school hours. I don't know, do you have a-
Well, I think that what we're doing is, and Tricia's gonna put that out with, um, for a student, when we found out that they're gonna be, they were a successful, um, uh, bus company this year, that we wanna see what it would cost for different scenarios. And that's gonna be, uh, a, a study that will go on in the fall. And we'll have to see how that works out. And then, we had to, um, ensure that we're going to have a lag between the start times of the two schools. And it was proposed that, you know, the, um, secondary side would be seven thirty and, and the, um, elementary side would be eight thirty with the project. So, um, that is, because they need that, uh, time for the traffic to, uh, go through and, um, make sure that everybody, that they're not backed up onto the main street. So that was, um, something that we, um, that the building project made us agree to. And to do that traffic study, they had to say that we'd stop an hour.
If I'm not mistaken, I think what you're looking at is the bigger picture, not, she was just giving an example of the buses.
Do you have a month-by-month transition calendar?
Or even a list of every, like, a list of everything that needs to be, uh, discussed and determined, like, starting off with, you know, the, you know, the, the topics of, you know, and then incorporating from there, identifying what the time, you know-
You mean similar to this thing?
That's what I was gonna say, that's, that's gonna be put, that's gonna be given to us by the, the building project. Because they will, their consultants will talk to us about each of those things as they are scheduled. So that's not, that's the, the ma- that's the building part of it. So, you know, when they're putting the, uh, the, the flooring on, the, you know, the walls.
Right, but wouldn't you be in a collaboration with, uh, you know, internally, about some of the internal issues? In something similar, where you're trying to line them up with what they're doing? So you, so somebody can look at this and say, okay, we're on track, or we're off track, or this hasn't been done, or-
But that's what they do, because we need to coordinate with, um, with the consultants on what piece will happen, right.
When you say the-
Yeah, they, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
That's what they do, so are you suggesting they're gonna say, okay, you guys need to discuss the, um, the, the, the bus schedule? You know, that'll be on their list?
Well, as I mentioned, the, um, for example, with the furniture, we've already planned that meeting, so we have, there's a schedule that way. So we will do that. This piece is, uh, Tricia had already mentioned she was doing that.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, is there a comprehensive list? And if, if there isn't, do you think it might be, um, beneficial to create a comprehensive list of everything that needs to be discussed and determined, you know, prior to, you know, moving into the new school? And then when you do get that comprehensive, you know, when you, when you identify what that comprehensive list is, you know, you know, um, determine, you know, when does this need to be, you know, accomplished by?
Sure, yes.
Something sooner than, and some things later.
And I think that there is something like this already, so we're gonna, we'll just work with that.
And I'm assuming you're gonna do that with all the stakeholders and the, the, the schools and so on?
Yeah, and that's why we have Kent coming in the first day of school, so that everybody will be, well, but those pieces need to be there. Like, for example, people get, um, very interested in moving, the boxing, all of that stuff. That is a piece that comes from the building project that we need to coordinate. We can't do it on our own, it's hired through them. And so all of these pieces that are going to affect what people do is coming, so, example, how many, um, you know, what, what's the internal structure of a, of a room? And we need to have, um, you know, the principal assign them, then we'll have what you can bring, what you can't bring. But that is something that we are going to have that list drawn up. So that's why we're, um, meeting with the consultants, and this is the time.
So you're, you're not, you're not suggesting you're not gonna do anything respective of that till you get the list, are you, Dr. Lally?
Well, we're already gonna be meeting with them next week, or next week or the week after, week after.
I see.
Yeah, I think I'd take a look at their list and just see if there's, you know, what, what are some things that they're not addressing that, you know, the, you know-
Yeah, I'm thinking more, I know that they, they do their thing in terms of the physical, uh, moving furniture selection. I know they do that, and they have a timeline.
Well, they usually have to do it with them, they don't do it, yeah.
Yeah, I know, but they, they've already, they have a timeline. But I'm just thinking about the other things that only, only the school department decides, whether it's assignment of staff, or, um, even all kinds of things, like the, the blending of the, the, um, the s- school handbooks and all of those things.
At this point, that's what this is all about, that's all, yeah.
Yeah, and it sounds like you're doing pieces, but I think it would be nice to have a list and just for us to, you know, and, and so the list can be reviewed periodically and just make sure that it's, you know, a comprehensive list, and then as you think of other things, it gets added onto it. Because it's hard to, you know, maintain that in your head, um, you know, it, likely situations would fall through cracks, but-
And that's helpful to us too, because the public is, you know, you know, it comes to us and will say certain things as they come to you, but it would be helpful that we have some sense of what you're doing and we're not in the dark.
Sure.
And, and, and it would give assurance to people. So I think that would be useful, just like it's mandated under the law with these funds to do periodic checks on things. I think we have to have that periodic, uh, review. And I think that's where the committee's coming from, am I right on that? Is there a consensus on that? Good, are there any other, yes?
I don't know whether, I mean, it ties into what we're talking about, and I don't know whether it should be here or under new business to talk about it in a future day. Has anybody brought up the discussion of a later start time for the junior senior high school? That's, you know, a lot of towns are looking at that, and this would kind of seem like an opportune and time to, to look at it. Look at it, and I don't know whether it's come up in any conversations or anything. Um, I know, um, I think it was Newton, and I have, I tapped it somewhere, I couldn't seem to find it. Um, has done some committee work on it, and I don't know whether that's something that we want to look at or not. I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there, I'm not saying-
It comes up periodically, it's kind of cyclical, and it has, right.
These days, because of the research.
Right, but that research was back there, so that, there was a committee that did that, um, and it was all, um, out there when I was principal of a high school. So, um, and that was a big, so the problem is, you've gotta get people on board.
I don't think we need to get into it right now, but the point's made.
But that's why it's always, yeah, right. Definitely.
Point well made. Uh, are there any other points, yes?
You know, you mentioned that, uh, you're, you're looking to purge and get rid of obsolete, um, furniture equipment and so forth. And, you know, I know, um, when we had the review of the, the different reports, um, from the auditor and just making sure we're adhering to policy and procedures and so forth, you know, to have a, um, a policy and a practice in place as to, you know, you know, how something gets on, uh, is purged and gets on the obsolete list. Um, you know, so I'm sure you, you know, when you purchase furniture and stuff, it's recorded, so you, you know, you know what you have and, um, um, but is there a policy in place if you're looking to purge some of this stuff?
Um, there's, I know that, um, people haven't thrown out furniture and that kind of thing, but we will look at that and make sure that, um, nothing good will be thrown out, because that's, it can be, you know, even if you wanna recycle it, you want to donate it, that type of thing, would be nice, yeah, right.
Or, you know, if it's, you know, on a list to, to be, um, to, to purge.
And there's also the fact that you don't know what you're gonna do with these buildings. So you may, there may be a good reason to leave some furniture behind in those, depending on what their use will be.
Okay, please continue, Dr. Lally.
Uh, am I done? I think, I, that was the end.
Well, you have now the courses of study, do you?
Yeah.
On the year's student council report?
Thank you, Mallory.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I, since we got the course of study and the handbooks this morning, um, just a reminder that we shouldn't be getting things the morning of the meeting.
The point is well taken. Okay, please continue, Dr. Lally.
Okay, so, um, each, um, so, uh, first, the course of study would be Dr. DeMello.
Please come up, Dr. DeMello.
Thank you.
How are you folks tonight?
Good evening.
And thank you for coming in from your vacation for this.
Before you start, I just wanna say, I'm really excited about this program of studies. I'm seeing all those nice new things in there. Can you point out the new, I saw quite a few new programs in there, and could you point what those are? And I thought that was very interesting.
I think I can capture most of them. Um, we haven't had the opportunity yet to present the program of studies, but I will share with, not, the, uh, school improvement plan, but I will share with you that, um, um, you know, one of the things that's in it is, um, you know, putting in more courses and being able to address 21st century skills and, and, uh, and global perspectives and, um, uh, life skills and career skills. And really, uh, working to enhance those. So we think that some of the new courses we've put in do just that. Um, in English Language Arts, we have a global literature, uh, course going in. And we're also trying to, or are re-offering, uh, film studies, which apparently we had some time ago, but haven't had in, in a while. And, um, and hoping to get journalism in as well.
Mm-huh.
Um, in history, we have a, a global issues, um, course, in addition to our psychology and criminal justice, which are continuing to run and have a great deal of student interest. In, um, science, technology, engineering and math, we're gonna introduce a computer science program. We have a, um, a grant that we received, a collaboration, that's, um, requires us to put in a full-year course in computer science. We get to train two teachers, we'll get professional development training throughout the year, and we're really excited about that, because, uh, we're hopeful that down the road, we can really start, as we get the technology, we can really start to expand that and make sure that our, uh, our kids are graduating here with some, um, real computer science, um, abilities, programming and so on. Um, in science, we are, um, offering AP Bio again, which we haven't had in a while, but we're also reintroducing marine science. And then we have a brand-new course, uh, biotechnology and, uh, research. We also were awarded another small, um, grant recently in, uh, in science. So we're excited about, uh, about that and hoping that that new program will give us an opportunity to, uh, apply for another grant in, um, October that we kind of have our eyeballs on, that's much bigger. Dreaming big, hundred thousand, so we're gonna, we're gonna try to look into something about that. Uh, in, um, the arts, um, we're adding musical theater as, uh, an option. We have an awful lot of students that have an interest in that, we're trying to look ahead. We're gonna have a beautiful, new, um, facility. We wanna make sure that we can put some things in it and have it, uh, really being maximized. So, um, we're gonna have a go at, at musical theater next year as, uh, an elective course. And, um, I think that's pretty much it.
Really, Dr. Lally?
I'm just taunting you. I'm just messing with you a little.
You're just messing with me.
I'm just messing with you. Um, and so for world language, we have, uh, Latin, and, um, we're gonna need, because of our numbers, we're also gonna need some supports in, um, Spanish, um, because we have, um, about thirty additional ninth graders entering, I mean, uh, excuse me, seventh graders entering the building compared to this year's seventh-grade class. And then we wanted to retain, students by retain, I don't mean keep back, I mean retain from going somewhere else. And, uh, I think that we've, um, hopefully accomplished that to a certain degree. We probably have about another twenty freshmen over, um, this year's, uh, class. So that equates to two, um, you know, two more classes. Um, with respect to the Latin, every seventh and eighth grade student will receive, um, exploratory Latin program, and then we're offering Latin one. We are hoping it's gonna be able to run, it didn't, uh, it didn't get a big calling from, uh, from the kids, but we are going to, uh, do our best to, um, uh, to run it. Um, and we're also introducing, um, with that new world language teacher, um, a world cultures, um, course for our, um, seventh-grade students. Um, some of them who are, um, have already mastered some math skills and aren't necessarily needing the additional math course that, um, that most of our seventh graders take. So we're hoping to give them at least, um, some opportunities to explore some other things. And again, all of these things here are addressed in our, um, uh, our school improvement plan.
Is the ancient civilizations new? Because I see that in the rhetoric.
Well, um, the, uh, the, a couple of them, um, weren't in there. I think it's probably because it was a nine, a lot of it was nine through twelve, but then some parts of it did have the seventh and eighth grade curriculum. But I thought all parents are probably going to be looking at, at the program of studies, whether you're in seventh, eighth grade, not just high school. So we did make some addition like that, so A- Ancient Civilizations has been a typical seventh-grade, uh, curriculum, as has World History One, which also wasn't in there as an eighth-grade, um, student.
The band, the same thing?
Uh, the band was, we did run this year, but that hadn't been in there, the actual, um, uh, band chorus was in there. Um, but most of those, I believe, have been-
Well, I think it's very exciting, I, 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 I hope that the parents of the students in the fifth and sixth grade will also look at this program of studies, because it's a very comprehensive, um, you know, program, and it speaks well of what you're trying to do and the faculty are trying to do at, uh, the whole republic schools. So, are there any questions about the program of studies? Yes?
Um, just one, I'm just on, on a quick glance. Uh, has any thought, I know band and chorus, five days a week for one semester? Unless you're making it three days a week, which is for the full year, which is, which would shoot-
No, band and, band and chorus runs a half a year, a semester, yeah. And that's right now, but some students, if they wanted and had the space elective-wise, uh, they could, think they could take it for a half year if they had, as eleventh or twelfth grader, if they needed another space, right, space, right? Mary Beth just double checking, yeah.
But, well, but something like band and chorus, and it's the same thing as art, which our five-credit courses, is it's kind of cumulative, so you have kids for the first two terms, and then they don't get to continue for the other two terms, as opposed to even if it was the same two and a half credits, along with another, you know, have it, you know, three times a week, um, for the full year, so is-
Scheduling-wise, that, that, yeah, that doesn't- Well, it's, I mean, I wouldn't say it's a nightmare, it's just, but any time you have a schedule, it, you know, you create limitations. And one of the things that I wanted to mention that we're doing is, you know, some of the courses I, I kept in here, but may not, um, run this year. So for example, um, AP World, AP US History, or what, US History? Um, not running, because we, we're still a small school. But if we want to be able to offer a lot of different electives, we can't run them every year, we don't have enough kids to, to fill them. And we space ourselves out too much, we don't have enough. So some of these courses we may offer, start to offer every other year, so that you can take it in eleventh grade. If you miss it, you can take it twelfth grade, we'll kind of rotate it, um, for students. But that allows them to be able to be exposed to more electives than they would be if we run the same thing every year. So we are gonna try to work a little bit of a rotation, so we can fit more electives into our, you know, our small school.
Do you see your classes, uh, gaining more students over the last year, these, this year, is there a trend? Can you predict the trend of this coming here?
For grade nine, you mean?
Yeah.
Uh, I'm sorry, uh-
For the grade, the students, is there, are we capturing more students?
Well, yes, that's what I mean, I believe we, we've, um, it's hard, I'd have to look at, um, my, I, I admit I didn't do percentage-wise, because I believe last year, when I glanced, I think we had almost forty percent loss in the, in the, in the, uh, thing. I didn't do a, a percentage, but I know we have at least twenty more students, but the class may have been a lot bigger at the beginning. Do you happen to know the percentage of, no, but I can try, I can try to find that out, but-
So what's the size of the grade nine class looking like right now?
Like, we're fifty-six now and the current grade, the, the grade nine that just finished and the one that's coming will be uh, I think seventy-eight or pushing eighty.
And how many were in eighth grade, when they were in eighth grade? How many students were there?
Uh, we have uh, one, yeah, yeah.
One, 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 one.
Okay.
So that's a, a pretty good, a pretty good save, a pretty good save, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It's improving, it's improving.
Ten percent, a ten percent increase.
And I hope with, one of the other things we tried to do was student interest, gauge student interest in the courses that we were trying to um, offer. Um, and, and listen to what they're saying because if, if they're passionate about it, then they're going to also um, perform better with it. So, um, we're trying to address that and balance it with some, um, some of the individual talents we have of teachers who can help kind of give them another perspective because it's a passion of theirs, so we're trying to find a.
Are there any questions, further questions on the program of studies?
Just want a little change in the senior capstone.
Oh, thank you for asking that, yes. So um, so the capstone project, we wanted to continue to grow and uh, try to make it a little bit more rigorous, um, uh, and also interdisciplinary and bring in some other, other components. And so um, we've had committees meet, talk about it, staff members, as well as in particular. Um, and it's a good, cause it's a good opportunity to thank um, Suzie Peyone for everything she's done in helping to really create a foundation for uh, the capstone project. Next, right now, this past year, if you were a senior, you didn't get a separate English class. You just um, you know, did English and the capstone was built into that. Um, looking forward to a new school, more opportunities, a, a change in a schedule that may allow for students to leave and explore, go out and meet with other mentors in other places, things like that. We want to start to alter the capstone project a little bit more. So it's now going to be a totally separate class. And so they will have uh, grade twelve English um, that they'll take, or AP English that they'll take. And then every student will be doing a capstone project i- in a course that's called Capstone Communications. Because again, in our uh, school improvement plan, one of the things that came loud and clear through the school council was that uh, we wanted to expand life skills and twenty-first century skills and so we're going to, in that communications component, you probably saw in the write-up, they'll get a chance to work on, um, you know, interview skills, resume writing, um, uh, career, you know, career choices, other kinds of twenty-first century skills and career choices that, uh, career skills that aren't currently uh, addressed anywhere, public speaking. Um, so that will be a year-long course that everybody will, will take.
That's very important.
Yeah, I think it's gonna add a nice uh, component and it will also allow uh, teachers to come in who are mentors for students and um, if they're freed up on that period, come in and uh, work a little bit with them uh, separately. So we think it's um, we think it's gonna be a good improvement and I'm happy about it because it was generated by um, by the staff, so.
That's good.
It'll be a strong program.
Yes.
I just have one more question. Started to touch upon it, um, and we're looking at potentially a different kind of schedule as we move into the new building.
We have to, you know, I'm, um, yeah, I know you're asking questionable things, so that, as we learn more information, like, you know, how many sixth-grade teachers will come with us, then, you know, will be coming to the, the uh, the junior, senior high school, then we can start to talk about what kind of a schedule we'll have, whether it will rotate or not. I mean, right now, we have a rotating schedule, which has a lot of advantages. You know, you get kids at different times of day, but it also has disadvantages. We're gonna be right next to an elementary school where maybe now our kids can come over and do some um.
So when would you anticipate, just to go back to that issue about the scheduling?
Yeah.
When would you anticipate that should be done or would be done in, in preliminary form anyway?
You know, I'm, I'm anxious to get it done because I know that come October, you're gonna be asking for um, budget recommendations. And so I'm, you know, I'm anxious to get as many of those eggs lined up so that um, I can give you numbers that are, are realistic and uh, and that align with the school improvement plan.
Mm-hmm, good, good. Are we required to approve this preliminary study? Generally, we do, don't we?
Um, you can.
I think we will.
I think we do.
Will anyone entertain a motion to approve the Hulberg Junior Senior High School Program of Studies?
So who?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? It's approved.
Thank you for.
Now, if you please turn on the student handbook.
I say, really nice job and it's nice to see that it's been incorporated into the course curriculum.
Thank you.
If you could please address the student handbook.
Sure, um, I think we have a pretty solid handbook to begin with. Um, I agree with uh, Ms. Stevens. I, in fact, we were talking uh, a couple of weeks ago about maybe, obviously there are, there are, when it comes to disciplinary things, so there can be some differences clearly between an elementary and a, and a middle high school. But I'm hoping that for next year, there may be some uh, some components of it that can sort of be district-wide components of the handbook and then aspects that are sort of level-specific, elementary or, or secondary that we can work out. Having said that, I think we have a pretty good, or had a pretty good foundation to begin with. There's only a couple of things really that we uh, addressed in um, in the new version and actually, I'm looking at the wrong thing. I, you have it in red in front of you, I hope. And so um, so one of them, uh, I know we were asked to put in the drug, thank you, I had it on the computer, thank you. The drug uh, addition statements, those two statements. So we added those right in with our other uh, um, areas that addressed drugs and alcohol. The other uh, thing, which again, I'm really pleased about, is that came about actually through, um, I started a faculty council this year where I try to meet um, once a month with uh, staff members who um, you know, were interested in serving on it. It's open to, to anybody to come. But as a result of the faculty council, um, and actually this was brought up initially in the school council, was things around um, uh, student leadership opportunities for them and a way to be recognized a little bit more, but also a way to hold students um, accountable if they were in a leadership role and didn't really meet the demands of it. So for example, if you're a class officer and you're really, you know, not performing as a class officer, that there is something in writing in the handbook that says you, these were your obligations and you weren't meeting them and therefore, you know, you are no longer able to, to serve as an officer, as an example, or a captain or anything else. But it also, uh, uh, um, on, on the more positive spin of it, 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 I think, um, helps to really specify for students um, what the expectations are, so they know when they accept a leadership role, what they're getting into, that they are role models and that they can get a little bit of additional acknowledgement for that leadership role. Uh, we, we're planning some training for any student who is put in a leadership um, position, whether, you know, elected or, or appointed. And so we hope to get some, uh, some training for them in uh, in the fall and then throughout uh, the year. Uh, that's on twenty-eight, page twenty-eight, for those who are kind of peeking.
Are there any other questions on the student handbook? I have, this is not related to the student handbook, but while you're here, before we approve the student handbook, you heard the auditor talking about the um, co-curricular activities.
I had a little bit of a heart, couldn't really hear much back there, so you might have to tell me what you're, yeah.
The co-curricular activities, there were certain um, things that just hadn't been followed and I'm assuming, are you gonna be working with Trish to coordinate a, a format so that everybody who's involved in that, both students and advisors and uh, their, the reporting requirements are met?
Absolutely. We've already had a couple of conversations earlier in the year and um, along with my uh, um, my assistant um, uh, in trying to find out, what, what did we have for funds this year, how do they work, how do they run, what's the checks and balances that are a bit built into the system? So, um, you know, tried to uh, learn that and figure out how we were doing it this year and then have had conversations about, um, you know, what we might do.
Because obviously, Dr. Lally, we're gonna expect that to be integrated into our, you know, reports in a quarterly fashion.
I knew when I spoke with Trish, we talked about waiting until, in fact, I said, well, what do we, what about the student activity accounts? She said, let's wait for the auditors to finish their assessment before we decide and um, you know, kind of how we're going to, to do that. And some of that will be, I'm sure, driven more uh, district. I know high school, we have a lot of those accounts, probably more than the others, but that's uh, that's obviously a kind of a district thing.
I assume you're working on that, Dr. Lally.
We will make sure that we are, because we're going, we've already talked about the fact that there'll be only two accounts now, there'll be, you know, when we go into the new school. So that'll be easier to manage.
But even the sub-accounts need to be apparently audited.
There'll still be a lot of sub-accounts.
Exactly.
At least up to your trips.
Right, well, that's where it comes up to, where it went over the amount too, I'm sure, because you collect money for trips and then it, you're gonna pay it right out.
And then if you have a suggestion, obviously, on the amount, if it is indeed too small, uh, would, perhaps you could give us a report on that at our next meeting, if you think it should be increased
Yeah, we'll talk about that.
From ten thousand or something else.
That was one of the things that I had planned for my summer.
Okay, fair enough. Good, um, all right, well, should we vote on the student?
Well, I think you might wanna vote on the policy that is in there first. You were gonna.
Um, well, I, we can do that. Um, why don't we, uh, we could do that. Uh, I suppose we could take it out of order.
Because I think there, it's in every, every handbook.
It's in every handbook.
Well, it's still just the first reading.
Well, but I think, didn't you say you wanted?
Well, it is a first reading and we do want it in the handbooks, uh, because the, it's a legal requirement that it be in by the start of the year. So I think we'll have to, uh, you know, finesse those things when it's required. Well, why don't we do this um, with the assumption that we're gonna adopt the um, the portion that has been added in? Why don't we accept the student handbook? Is that, is there a second motion to accept it? Is there a second? All those in favor? Okay. And, uh, thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Now, before we continue, since Dr. Lally raised it, and I respect what Dr. Lally raised.
So it's already approved now?
Why don't we, no, why don't we actually take up the policy? I will tell the committee that the policy, which came from the Mass uh, School Committee, I also had um, our council review it and she's approved it. So um, having said that, everyone, I assume, has copies of it. Would someone like a motion to approve those two policies? As printed?
Second.
All those, any further discussion? All those in favor?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Do they approve that as a first reading or?
Well, I think we should approve them. I'd, I'd like to do all three readings if I can, but my sense is uh, what we'll do is, why don't we treat it as a first reading, however, we would like it to be um, posted uh, in all the handbooks as if this was the third reading and we will have two other meetings prior to the end of the school a year, so uh, we can ratify it and confirm it, but why don't we adopt it as a policy, notwithstanding the readings? Um, if that's agreeable to the committee. Uh, are there any further questions? All those in favor? That passes unanimously. All right, Dr. Lally, what's next on the program?
Principal Stevens.
Welcome, Principal Stevens, please come on up.
So like um, Dr. D'Amello, we had a pretty good starting point for our school handbook, um, so there were only a few additions. Um, did make an edit, I'm on page five, I believe you all have copies. Um, just under the description of MCAS, currently our fifth grade is the only group that does take MCAS, um, sign, in the area of science and technology. And then added a little description about PARC, but again, this may change in upcoming years, so that's an area that we'll continue to make sure it's updated along the way. Um, and then as Dr. D'Amello said, we added the um, policy on alcohol, tobacco and drugs. And I specifically did cite some of the programs that we use at the elementary level to educate, you know, students on areas of peer pressure and things like that, cause that's really where we focus at, um, especially at the younger age. Um, and those included Second Step, which our adjustment counselor runs, um, and they look at peer pressure, um, interacting with people you don't know and so forth. We have the Officer Field Safety Program. Um, and then we do growth and development workshops, which the nurse, the adjustment counselor, a phys ed teacher run and they, again, focus on self-esteem and things like that, cause the goal is to hopefully get them in a positive place, so that way alcohol, drugs, tobacco are not an issue in their future. Um, and then the only other minor change was just some wording we clarified and um, we didn't eliminate anything but under health services after talking to um, both nurses at both elementary schools. We just wanted to make it very clear for families um, about the policies within the health room. So nothing was changed, it was just organized in a more um, family-friendly way. So that way, families understand that, you know, we do conduct, conduct screenings, um, the importance of keeping those emergency cards up to date with contact information, um, the policy on crutches. And then it came into light this year that we needed to make sure that parents understood the medicate, the medication policy that, you know, at no time should a student be bringing medic, medicine themselves on them into school. So we just kind of made it kind of more family-friendly there. But again, nothing was really changed there, it was just the organization. So those were the only um, proposals that we made forth, um, other than an exciting one, that our newsletter, the word, instead of each month, it goes out, it does go out each week. So that was a minor change, but.
Are there any questions for Principal Stevens? Okay, would someone like to make a motion to adopt the handbook of the South School?
Second.
All those in favor? That passes unanimously. Thank you, Principal Stevens. Now, we're turning to the John F. Kennedy School.
I believe we have Principal Callen in.
Welcome, Principal Callen in.
Hello. Um, Mallory and I worked last year to make our handbooks very similar, so that the transition would be a lot easier um, for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen year. I, the only thing I removed was the MCAS testing, cause we no longer do the MCAS, we did the PARC this year. Um, I did include the alcohol, tobacco and drugs, which was never included in this, at this level. Um, they do discuss peer pressure in Second Step and Third Grade, um, but I think it's something the way that society is now, I think it is something, you know, it should be brought to light a lot earlier than you know, it has been in the past. Um, the differences in table contents between uh, the JFK and the South, the JFK has extracurricular clubs and office detention, which we do not have. So basically, they're pretty similar. Um, there were a couple of corrections on page five that Mallory and I saw, but um, I think everything else is pretty much the same as before.
All right, are there any questions for Principal Callen regarding the JFK handbook? Would someone like to move to adopt that?
I just have a question about the health services too. Did you, um, the language that.
The language, we left our language the same. I know it was slightly different from the South Schools before. Um, but we did, I left it the way it was last year.
Okay, can you feel it's clear, can you please?
Yeah, I felt it was, it was fine. Mrs. Walker had reviewed it, the nurse of the school, so.
All right, would someone like to make a motion?
So.
All right, all those in favor? That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Callen. Okay, and what is next on our agenda?
Maintenance update.
Maintenance update. Go right ahead, Dr. Lally.
This might be repetitive for some people who were at the last meeting here, the uh, Asian American meeting, but um, we don't have too many, uh, we didn't do too many projects this past year, obviously because of the new building and we don't have any major projects scheduled for next year, other than transitioning into the new building. Um, last year, because uh, summer programming, due to construction, wasn't going on here at the high school, we uh, we team cleaned all three buildings, um, which was kind of good practice for our custodial staff, cause we're all gonna be one building next year. Um, this year, because we have programming in all three buildings during the summer, we're going to uh, divide up the custodial staff. High school staff staying at the high school, which is the biggest school in the building, uh, they're currently about sixty to seventy percent done with uh, maintenance and uh, cleaning tests on the second floor of the high school. Their goal is always to get out of there by July fourth, because it gets hot as anything on the second floor, so uh, they're working on cleaning. Pulled all the classrooms apart and they're, they're, they're ahead of schedule, which is good. And um, all the elementary custodians are currently at the JFK, cause we have a lot of programming, about nine different classrooms. The programming starts July fifth and runs till mid-August, which doesn't give us much time on the backend, so we're getting those rooms ready ahead of time, so I pulled the two maintenance staff from the South over to the JFK, uh, to get ahead of schedule there and then, so basically four and four, are the positions, they're gonna be four and four, working together in various buildings. Um, just the, the couple of projects we did do last year, um, as I, I spoke at the last meeting was uh, we refinished the uh, the gym floor here at the high school, which hadn't been done in several years. We're gonna do that again this summer, just a top coat. Um, and then we did the uh, the wireless update, uh, the upgrade here at the high school. Um, forty percent of the wireless network wasn't working. This was mainly an IT project, so forty percent of the wireless network wasn't working. It was all replaced, we have twenty new ports, um, and we are trying to get that reimbursed by the MSBA, because we're gonna move them over to the new building, the new technology, so. Those are the major projects. I don't foresee any major projects for next year, other than. I don't foresee any major projects for next year, other than we're kind of fixing things as they break. We are also going through and inventorying anything that we have repaired or replaced. I was talking about some door locks that we've added here at the high school, and some of the other buildings that are valuable, that we can use as replacement parts in the new building as things break down. So, we have several, probably more than fifty of those, that we'll take apart and have as kind of attic stock, so to speak. Obviously, the building project is moving, progressing very quickly. I toured that today with the Assistant Superintendent on the building, Andrew. As you can see, as you're pulling in, Building A is about ninety percent bricked, the roof is on there. They have sprinkler systems are in place. A lot of the MEP has done, the rough plumbing is done in some areas, rough electrical, it's moving on, progressing very, very rapidly. That's going well. I am working to put together my maintenance plan for the new building, working with both Flansburgh and Consigli. And I also have, I'm working with a consultant to figure out our staffing needs for the new building. We're talking about potentially adding a third shift for custodial services. Right now, we have a day shift, night shift, I'm looking for a kind of a midday shift, maybe eleven to seven, to help with lunches, where it's particularly busy for the custodial staff. And then, to get a head start on the night cleaning once activities are winding down. We are also, at the recommendation of Consigli, was to hire, to contract services for HVAC maintenance and repair in the new building, which is similar to what we do now. We have a company, we have a pneumatic system now, and they, I have a company that maintains, does all our upgrades and updates and maintenance on that, changing filters and that and the like. So, in order for our, to meet our obligation for warranties, we're going to do that in the new building as well. So, I'm working on that, and I'm hopefully going to get an RFP, put out, a request for, to get bids on that. So, I can essentially know what I need for a budget going into next year. So, we're trying to put together the maintenance plan, I'm hoping by the fall, so that I know, I'm not guessing as to my budget requirements for fiscal eighteen. Because I know we start that process relatively early, so.
Have you been looking at capital improvement issues too, Mike?
Honestly, I have not. We have a list of some things that we did last year. We've got one thing approved, we're probably going to carry over the other items. And then, I think, you know, some of them are equipment items that, you know, we're looking at, a tractor. But I have not focused any attention on that yet. Like I said, there's four or five items that we requested, we've got, we were granted one, so we're going to carry those other items over and probably see what we need once we enter the building. It's hard to anticipate sometimes.
Right.
So, you know, that'll be, that'll be ongoing.
Makes sense. Are there any questions for Mike? Very thorough presentation, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
All righty, is there anything else, Dr. Lally, in your report?
No, I think I'm all set.
All right, well, yes.
Follow-up question about maintenance or the transition. We talked a lot about the transition into new school, but we didn't talk about, we didn't talk about the transition into the upcoming school year.
Why don't we talk about that in new business?
Okay.
We'll go through that, all right? Okay, good. So, why don't we hear from Ms. Louisville?
Yes.
Trish?
We are very close to the end of the year and the spending. And I gladly like to tell you that we're pretty much, we're okay with our finances for this year. Your goal is to spend down your budget accordingly. And we've watched, we've watched it, you know, over the months and the weeks and such. So, we will pretty much, we will be spending every penny of the budget. We've had a little bit of extra funding because of resignation, a couple of resignations, for instance, in the salaries. That can cover some of the overages in the special ed areas. So, we're, at this point, we're checking the budget on a daily basis, because we have to make sure that all invoices are coming in. Anything that's encumbered either has to have an invoice in right away. Or if we think that the item or the service is not going to happen, we disencumber the funds. So, on a daily basis, I'm checking the bottom line of the budget.
Are there any problematical areas that you see at this point?
No.
Okay.
I know it's a very busy time for you, very busy.
Every day, every, from one day to the next, it can go, you know, flip flop.
Well, please let us know if there's a red flag that appears of a nowhere. Appreciate that. Are there any questions? Yes.
I have one question, Trish. I've asked this before in years past, and it occurred to me again this time. I was looking at some of the lines that were slightly overruled, and one of them is the sped in-town transportation. And we sped, and I know we spent a lot on that, and it's, we spent one hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. And the question I've asked before is, could the district benefit from leasing a couple of vans and using it for that in-town transportation to offset some of that cost? And also have those vans available for class trips or athletic travel? I just wonder if we could benefit from that and actually come out-
Sure.
A little bit ahead, but with the benefit of having this other transportation.
Sure. Well, I'll tell you what I, I'll share with you what I might, what I've experienced. First of all, when you purchase vans for a school district, you have to register the vans. If you register the vans as a town vehicle with a municipal plate, you can use them for athletic trips, field trips, et cetera. If you register the van as a pupil plate, which are those yellow license plates, you can only use those to transport, to transport students to and from school. You cannot ever use them for an athletic trip, a field trip, museum trip, anything. So, it's how you register the vans and what classification you register the vans determines how you can use it. So, they couldn't be shared in the manner that you had mentioned. And then, secondly, if you lease vans, you have to hire drivers. Now, you've got more people on the payroll, now you've got people that you may have to offer insurance to, who may be eligible for retirement plans and such. So, you've got to maintain the vehicles. So, now, are you going to contract the local garage to get your vehicles in? Constant oil changes and tire changes and tire rotations and things like that, that's just routine maintenance. Or are you going to hire a fleet of maintenance people? So, I've never thought that a district, especially a district this small, would benefit from leasing and then having to hire all these new employees as such.
I'm also wondering too, if some of the sped transportation is very specialized, so that it wouldn't be a good fit to have a regular van.
The lift, the-
You know, I think, I think that's some of the expense that you're seeing in the-
Exactly.
Transportation is the needs.
And the needs constantly change.
Right.
This year, you may need three or four wheelchair vans, next year, you may need one, you may need only one or none. So, it changes so much.
It's got to be the right fit, so I think that-
Well, that's my question, where does that line fall? I mean, it seems like with one hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, there's room for a full-time salary leasing, you know, the expense of leasing one or two vans. It just seems like a reasonable question to ask, that what-
Yeah, I think it's a great question, just to think, you know.
Absolutely.
See if there's a way to do it.
Let me ask you this, can we, can you do this for the committee? Because I think, you know, in the spirit of what John's asking, it's a fair question. Please give us a breakdown, perhaps, of the type of vans that have been used. We don't need to know about the students, you know, and what's utilized. And then, I think that would be helpful with John to see if, for example, if these are very highly specialized vans that change over the number of years, then that would be a little different than-
And again, that line item, that's just for in-town transportation.
I understand.
So, I think it would be helpful to do some comparison to understand how that one seventy-four is being spent, you know.
Absolutely.
Of course, understanding in-town transportation, but what do we mean by that? How many students, how many vans, how many, you know?
Yep. Absolutely.
And then, they can do the kind of cost analysis.
Yeah, okay, sure, I can put that together for you.
But this is also the first time we've heard the difference in the plates.
Yeah.
Because we've always, we've never been told that-
Right.
You can't use a pupil van to transport the volleyball team.
Right.
For example, that's, and that's the first time we've gotten that information.
And I know that, in talking with other business managers who have tried to use the vans for tennis club trip or something like that. If the police officer stops a van with the pupil plate on it, the orange plate, those are called seven-D vans. And you can only have a seven, someone must be licensed as a seven-D driver. So, you can't have the coach of the tennis team, who has a regular driver's license, drive a seven-D van. If a police officer pulls over a pupil van and looks at the driver's license, and it, and they don't have a seven-D license, or there's not seventy students going to and from school, you get a ticket for that. So, you know, there's something that is watched.
Can you do the reverse?
No. No, because you can't have a municipal van and then put-
Seventy, right, okay.
Right, that person, still need to have the seven-D license, and be only transported to and from school. So, no, you cannot change them.
Great, are there any other?
We have monitors for something, and some of these have an hour to track the students.
Thank you.
Specialized, so there's a lot of this.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions for Trish? Okay, thank you very much on that.
You're welcome.
Okay, is any more to your report, Dr. Lally?
I think that's it.
That's it?
Thank you.
Okay. So, now, we'll turn to some discussion items. The first is the school committee goals. I apologize, Beth and I had worked on some suggested goals for next year. Unfortunately, they didn't manifest themselves, and the, something got lost in the translation. So, there's a copy of last year's goals, and if anybody could take a look at it between now and the next meeting. If you have some suggestions, why don't we get them to me, and we'll circulate them? I, we have some suggestions on some of these that need to be changed. I might add that one of the things that we noticed on the goals was something we didn't, haven't done. And I'd probably like to do a special meeting sooner rather than later on the annual self-evaluation. So, if you also can think of, maybe in August, it might make some sense to do it, I don't know. But I know there are vacation schedules, so if you can get back to me with maybe some dates where you're all going to be around, then I'd try to maybe have a special meeting where we can just informally, there won't be any votes or anything, just talk about a self-evaluation. And maybe we can meet here, maybe it could be on a Saturday or something like that. Is there anything you'd like to say?
No, no, I think give people time to look at it.
I think that makes some sense. All right, so we'll look forward to getting those for our next meeting. The, well, let's look at those appointments. I also gave you the list of appointments. I just see one listed here, but, I mean, my sense on these appointments was that it might make sense to do, you know, two years, so that, you know, we have two years at the same thing. And if that's all right with you, I'd like to approve those appointments for the current year that are on the list. Is there somebody willing to make a motion on that?
Someone?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? That carries. I would ask Dr. Lally or our recording, also make a motion that our recording secretary be reappointed for this year, so there's no question about it. Bridget, does someone make a motion on that?
Someone?
Second.
All those in favor? And Bridget, I would ask that you report Barbara's appointment to the selectman, because they want that. The, no, no, no need to do that. So, now, we've covered, we've covered those, and now, let's go, we've done the reading, the policy. And that, again, should be posted on the website as well, under Courts Without Law. Now, we'll turn to some subcommittee member reports, and perhaps we can start with, who would like to go first on the reports? Beth, do you want to talk a little bit about the policies that have been going on?
On the policies? On the, well, these two policies are the ones we've been-
Accepted.
That we have been working on, yeah.
There are some other policies that had some legal wrinkles.
Yes.
And we'll talk about those on another time. And Nancy, would you like to perhaps talk about the foundation?
Sure. You know, we've had several meetings to establish a, to look to establish a school foundation, and which is consistent with one of our school goals, to support a potential of outside sources of funding. And so, this would be potentially a very good funding source to supplement the school and enhance educational and extracurricular opportunities. We are meeting again on Monday, June twenty-seventh, got a very hardy agenda, but working towards an aggressive timeline to formulate a foundation sooner rather than later. One of the things we really need to advance the foundation, to forward the foundation, is the district's vision and-
Oh, Nancy, I think we're going to be all set on that. The, I might add that, I might add that this is a private foundation, it's not, you know, technically connected to the Holbrook School District. But I will concur with Nancy that we've made some very substantial progress in people who are willing to be on the Board of Directors of that private foundation. And they're national in scope. So, I'm hoping that this will be a very substantial addition to aid the Holbrook Public Schools. I can't really get into it right now, it's a private thing, and they're, you know, meeting again, but we'll be happy, I'm sure, at some point, once they've got everything together and they're incorporated and have made an announcement about it, that they'll let everybody know, and we can share what's going on.
Right, there'll absolutely be a separation between the school and the foundation.
Private foundation.
But, of course, the foundation wants to support the school's vision.
Right.
You know, it's a, it is a partnership, although it's private, there's a level of partnership.
I can say this to most of the, I think all of the members, or most of them, on this board are past graduates of Holbrook High School, who are very passionate about wanting to leave something behind, and it's going to be very exciting.
We have a lot of work ahead of us, though.
There is a lot of work ahead, but that's okay, there's nothing wrong with work. Are there any other subcommittees that we'd like to address?
I just want to mention regionalization.
Yes, yes, please.
So, the regionalization committee, study committee, has been meeting. And just to update you, but I want to give a formal summary at the next meeting. But I sent information to Avon. They requested some information from us, and I sent them a response letter on April. And they were looking for information, asking, you know, the school department to provide information. But everything that they were asking for is information that's available, either on DESE or at Town Hall. I did respond, you know, indicating that, and I also attached some things that maybe they couldn't get access to our recently approved FY seventeen budget, which, that's a public document, I had it, I sent it to them. So, I responded with that. Just got a letter from them on June eighth. And, you know, really, they were, they were asking some interesting questions. They want, they wanted to- They want, they wanted to know if, if Holbrook would consider sharing the cost of their study. Of their regionalization study. And, um, that they were looking, they were continuing to look for information. They wanted to know what the committee's stance on regionalization was. I have formulated a response to them, um, you know, indicating that we did our study. And, you know, we, we would not be supporting, you know, financially their study. And that if there was anything specific that they, that their consultant is unable to get through DESE. Or Department of Revenue, to let us know if it's something that isn't available publicly. But I, I haven't been told any, anything like that. So, um, we're in an interesting spot right now, we're going to respond with that. There's been huge delays, you know, in communication between them, so, you know, I'll just respond with that.
Yeah, let me just say this to you, I'm not on your committee, it's a different committee, it's not associated really with the schools except that you're on it. But the, uh, I, I would say that, you know, columni dubies. If they don't even wanna pay for their own, you know, study committee, we're certainly not gonna be involved in that. And, uh, nor are we gonna make any comments about the issue of regionalization. I think the voters spoke pretty strongly when we got this new pre-K through twelve building, what direction that they want the town to go in. And, uh, I'm not, uh, you know, I would have to be persuaded in an overwhelming way to think otherwise, I could share that.
I, I, you know, and just speaking for myself personally, I feel the same way, honestly. I think I, I'd like to see our efforts and they are paying off in, in keeping our own kids here after grade eight. And we're, we're doing that, we're seeing that, so, you know, that's, that's where I am personally, I'm not gonna speak for the rest of the committee, but.
I hope they find the money to, uh, get the town clerk, uh, copies and.
I mean, I, I expect that once we're building open, that will, more and more will continue to stay as appropriate.
Right, right.
You know.
Exactly.
Go elsewhere for various reasons and that's appropriate.
Yeah.
But.
Right. Good, any other subcommittee reports? Okay, and what about school member reports? Barbara?
As if that was a surprise. There have been a lot of, um, end of the year stuff. Baseball, softball, track concluded successful seasons, um, baseball and softball made the tournament. Only, they just played one game, but they had successful seasons and did make the MIA tournament. Track sent the most athletes ever to the Division Four State Meet, I think there were like nine of them. There were a bunch of league all-stars, and this is also winter, which I can't remember if we mentioned here. But it was the winter and spring sports banquet, so they were all acknowledged there. The boys' basketball, Kyrie LaFange and Bobby Belizos. Girls' basketball, Danielle Mercier. Baseball, Joey Golden and Bobby Belizos. Softball, Courtney Foley, Shannon Walker, Caroline Curtis. Courtney Foley was based Mayflower League Player of the Year, uh, Mayflower League Coach of the Year, Maggie Gallagher, softball. Girls' track won the Mayflower League Sportsmanship Award. Nick Ripley, and this all came out of sports banquet, Nick Ripley did the decathlon for the second year in a row. At the state meet. And, um, Destiny O'Garrow, Mayflower League Champ in the one hundred and two hundred meters. And Dylan Carroll Brown in the hundred meter hurdles. And, you know, it's still a young program and it's growing. And, you know, so we wanna be sure to support our fledgling programs. So that, you know, we continue to have future successes. The end of the year, a music concert was great as always, there were some great senior solos. And I'd like to thank Julie Roth, Jeff Holbar, Rachel Sordello and Nicole Gabriel for working with all the students to put on a, a quality production. The art show and cultural fair at the Junior Senior High School and the art show at the South, were both excellent as usual. I mean, it's just amazing, the talented students we have across the spectrum. Music banquet and sports banquet were both held and recognized students in both programs. Five in the garden graduations, also the Flag Day Program at the South. Stop by the Field Day at JFK and an excellent third grade show closed down the school year. I think I got that all done in record time. Well, you know, there's lots of stuff going on and everybody should be acknowledged and commended for a great school year.
That's excellent. All right, so let, let's turn now to some action items. The first is the teachers' contract, uh, memorandum of agreement to be approved. Beth, would you like to talk about that?
Um, well, just that, you know, we have, had been meeting regularly and, um, we reached an agreement at our last meeting. Which would extend the current contract. And, um, I don't, there were a few minor language changes.
Yeah, I just wanna say we've been working in good faith with the teachers' union and we came to an interim contract. We're gonna be revisiting it, uh, in the fall. There's a second item there that shouldn't even be on here, but it's got nothing to do with the committee. But the, uh, what with the ground rules, that's a subcommittee issue. But the, um, with regard to the contract, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve it. It's already been approved by the teachers' union.
Someone?
Second. All those in favor? That passes. We'll next turn to the food service management contract. Would someone like to speak on that?
Just a few changes. Most of the changes concern, sorry, if I get a little confused, so. They are, um, scheduled to work five days before and two days after the close of school. To kind of get everything set up and taken down. The, um, the workday was actually increased from seven point five to eight hours for the sixteen, seventeen school year. And then we'll revisit it once we go into the new building because there's still a lot of unknowns. Um, as far as appropriate staffing needed, because this will be new for everybody with one kitchen and two servings. Instead of three kitchens and three serving areas. They will be provided, everybody will get, um, five aprons, separate from the uniform allowance.
Is this the workers' contract you're talking about? The manager?
Managers.
Managers, okay.
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah, so they're gonna get separate aprons?
They both are, actually.
Yeah, they both are, but.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and that's separate from the clothing allowance.
I see.
And the clothing allowance will be, um, come out of, they will be set up, um, through a specific company. So that everybody gets the same thing and hopefully, uh, that will be done through Chart Wells. Well.
Yep.
Um, and I think that's it.
And I just wanted to say as chairman, I'm gonna sign the memorandum of understanding.
Yes.
And then also, the, let's take a motion now on the, on the manager's contract. Would someone make a motion? Move the manager's contract, I'll move it.
Second.
Anything else to be said on it? All those in favor? Okay, now I'll turn to the, uh, would someone like to speak on the, uh, Holbrook Food Services workers' contract?
There was some consistencies there with the aprons and the, uh. And the, uh, scheduling and the hours, um, uh, to change from the eight hours to seven and a half. When we go into the new school, but to maintain the, or if I'm confusing it with the managers. The managers do only eight hours now?
Yeah. Yeah, sorry, I was just looking at something in the, the contract.
All right, would someone like to make a motion to prove that?
I just had a question.
Yeah, it is there.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is this supposed to be two thousand sixteen? It's in, it's July first, two thousand and fifteen. Is this supposed to be sixteen to two thousand and nineteen?
No, it's eighteen.
Yeah, it's, they're gonna be.
Retroactive.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there's.
There's one section, though, that you.
There's one section that my notes say, um, was deleted as a side discussion. And that's been taken care of and that should be.
It's still in there, though.
It's still in there.
So that should be taken out?
That needs to be taken out.
Okay. Well, with that.
On, on page, the top of page four.
Okay.
Under work year work.
All right, with that deletion, and once it's completed, if you'll authorize me to sign it, okay? Why don't we take a motion to accept it, that deletion?
Move to accept.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? All right, that carries. Good.
That's why I wanted to have them, so I can compare them and compare notes.
What?
And also I neglected the two percent like everybody else.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm also gonna sign the end of year report for the schools. After, so we've had the audit as report. Also, this isn't on here, but we might as well take it up, we just received it, uh, it's actually sent to me and our Dr. Lally. I think that was inadvertent, but, uh, my name and hers are on it to sign. This is the annual memorandum of agreement for the Avon School Committee and the Holbrook School Committee regarding the sports football. Would somebody make a motion to accept that?
But are the, uh, parameters unchanged?
They're unchanged, absolutely unchanged. Will there be a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Carries, great. We'll now turn to, um, the budget, uh, adjustments. Yes, please. Okay. No problem. That's all right. Why don't we talk about the reductions? Who would like to speak on that? Dr. Lally or?
Would we talk about the budget adjustments?
Proposed reductions for.
Oh, oh, okay, sorry. Yes, the one, so, uh, Trish and I went over these again, um, and.
Does everyone have a copy of this?
No. This is a different one. We just went over them again, I think there's other pieces, that's one I showed you.
You showed me, have you passed them out?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know you had the new one, yeah. I know, I'm passing them out now. I just gave a bunch. Thank you. Are there enough? Nope, is there enough?
Would you go through those, Dr. Lally, please?
The first one is again, um, the, um, the situation that Mallory was talking about too. About the, um, working together of the, um, of the JFK and the South School. To create a transition plan and to, um, work to, um, combining the grades. And, uh, making some type of, uh, alignment there. So that is, um, taking Stephanie who was, um, here in central office. So she'll fill one of those positions which saves one, um, salary. The second one is, um, uh, moving Kathy after she does her stint for Mallory. Then she'll be, um, moving as an AP, which is needed for the, um, the secondary when the new school comes in. So that'll be a transition period there. Prepaying supplies, that's some of the, um, um, maintenance supplies. That Mike is going to order now and use the money from this year because we didn't have any extraordinary expenses. Um, because of, uh, you know, the, we had a mild winter and all of that. So he was able now to prepay supplies, which will free up money for next year. Reducing the athletic bus, buses because, um, we were very fortunate that the, um, that Mike did a great job. In planning the, um, sporting events this year. So that we thought we would have to use a lot more transportation and he was able to finagle some deals. Let me see, yes, so, um, we were very fortunate so that we saved some money. And, uh, so we're using that to reduce the, um, the costs. And, um, Julie gave up the whole, uh, professional development line, which was fourteen thousand. This is the amount that wasn't taken out, so we just took that because she's using money from grants to, um, take care of professional development. Decreasing the number of days a week for detention was three thousand. Eliminating the attendance officer because now we have the SRO who will take care of attendance and who will do the residency checks. Saves us twenty-three forty-one. And, um, we've, uh, been able to, uh, get a, a high-quality tech director. We are very fortunate to, uh, and he'll be introduced soon. Um, so we will be saving some on that line, line item. And also the access points up here, the wireless access points that, uh, we talked about before. We are, we have submitted the, um, reimbursement, um, um, document to MSBA. And they're supposed to be getting back to us, but it looks like it should be, uh, something that, that they will give us the money for. And that comes to a total of two hundred thirty-two thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars, which is what we will need. Because of the three percent reduction in our.
And you recommend these reductions, Dr. Lally?
I do.
Now, are there any, uh, questions or comments to Dr. Lally regarding this?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
This will offset a, um, a three percent reduction. But where does that leave us? Does it leave us at level services or?
No, um, but we've had, we've added some people and we've, um, so, for example, we have retained the kindergarten teacher. Even though she's going somewhere else, we're gonna have to hire somebody. And, um, we've put in a Latin teacher. We've got the SRO, but the, um, the things that we are, are missing are gonna be these pieces right here.
So is this to, you know, I know we discussed some of this, um, at our last meeting and is this?
Replacing that.
Yeah, and so, so with regards to the eliminations of a sixth grade teacher, is that still happening?
Yeah, right, because that was not, uh, that class is gone anyway.
Okay. And with regards to the, the, I know you talked about, um, having an assistant principal at the Kennedy. Versus a principal at the Kennedy.
Um, yeah, Stephanie, we've, I've talked with Stephanie and to, um, Mallory and they thought co-principal was a good idea for that.
I think that's a great name.
A good title.
Yeah, co-principal, it's a very good title. We heard that first tonight, I think.
Well, a little surprise will help, it was associate, but associate means, um, associate principal means a co-principal. So, you know, why not? Make it easier for people to.
No, it means something different to me, so co-principal is a much better.
I think so.
Well, I think if you look, yeah, if you look it up, that, that was the definition that we give is, uh, co-principal. So we were, we said, well, we'll use the one that.
But we'll save that, uh, semantical issue for another day.
So just to clarify, so how many kindergarten teachers are in the budget?
Five.
And first grade?
First is four.
Is four, okay.
I'm a little concerned about that and we'll have to see how much the enrollments increase over the summer.
We can always revisit that, too, can't we?
I mean, there's some, some you have a few here and there. But, um, that will have to be something that's looked at because then what are you gonna cut to make another?
Well, uh, let me say this to you, maybe there's a way around that, so, but I, well, obviously, we wanna revisit that, obviously, let me see the figures.
Yeah, I'd like to keep a close eye on those.
Right.
Sure.
I think that's it within the realm of possibility, isn't it?
I just wanna say I really appreciate, you know, digging deep into the budget and, um, you know, coming up with the funds to, you know, support the needs.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, I'll just mention, you know, a lot of times we don't know the figures till the end of the year. For instance, the savings in the athletic buses and such, so when we're doing, when we're preparing a budget in the fall or, or the winter. We don't have as much information that, as we do towards the end of the year. So that's why we're able to get a lot of things cleared up.
And we were trying to squeeze out another teacher, but.
All right, would someone like to make a motion for the proposed reductions?
Second.
All those in favor? That passes. We'll now go to the next item on the agenda, which is not the next item on the agenda because we've gone through most of these items, I think. We're going to now go to the school committee calendar. And has everyone looked at the calendar, seen it? Okay.
This is a draft, so I know there'll be.
Yes, go ahead, Barbara.
Well, I had actually responded to everybody several weeks ago.
Right, you did, yes.
So I might as well do it publicly. That I'm not, I, I question the need for a July meeting. Just because, you know, Tricia's gonna be trying to close out the sixteen books, setting up the FY seventeen books. Seems to me that it makes more sense to have, uh, a meeting in early August. And then towards the end of August, so have two meetings in August and.
and then towards the end of August. So have two meetings in August and not one in July. You know, say the fourth and the twenty-fifth, if we feel the need for two meetings.
Yeah, I, you know, I respect your opinion on it. I just, I guess we disagree. I mean, I, my sense is we have a substantial budget with a lot of things on the plate. We've got the readings on the, the new law, for example, and that I think.
It's only a couple of weeks later.
No, I understand, but I, I do believe that, I, I do believe it makes sense for a committee with a budget the size we have to meet at least once a month. I, I don't think we can afford not to. And I, you know, I, I recognize how difficult that is. But nevertheless, I think we owe it, because there's a lot going on in August too. There's a lot going on with, you know, to look at it the other way, not just Trish, but there's a lot going on with the teachers and the administration getting ready for a new school year. So, you know, there's nothing to be said for a meeting in July when that's not happening. And, you know, taking care of some of the other issues that we have in front of us, like the goals and some of these other issues. So, I mean, my, my sense would be to have a July meeting. I don't know how the other members of the committee feel.
Well, I'm also not available on the twenty-first.
That's a different issue.
Okay, this is a different issue.
But let's talk about July first. Oh, there should be a meeting.
I'd like to see us meet at this month, to meet at least once a month. I think there's just too much going on and just skip them out.
I don't want to let a whole month go by myself.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we can look at the date.
There is a date too that I can't, you know, I mean, there are going to be dates that, you know, there is a date on here I can't make either, but I know this, you know, this.
Well, you know, but I, I, I believe that, you know, knowing, I mean, stuff comes up over the course of the year and then people can't make, but if we're setting a schedule, I don't think we should purposefully set a schedule when you already know something can't make it if.
But to get five people, you know, that's a tough thing, you know.
Well, I know, I know, but I, I do think that, you know, whatever date that you can't make, we should look at an alternate date.
It's a tough month, maybe.
Because if you, if you already know now that you have something, then let's see.
Well, out of deference to Barbara, is there another date like the fourteenth or the?
I can't go the fourteenth.
Yeah, okay. Right, so, I mean, I, it doesn't.
Then the twenty eighth.
The twenty eighth.
I don't have my calendar, believe me.
Yeah, I'm willing to.
I don't think I can do the twenty eighth.
Okay. So I think we're going to stick with the twenty-first unfortunately and, and even though that.
What about earlier in that week? It doesn't have to be Thursday.
Well, I can't do Tuesdays. I can't do certain days. I can't do it. Thursdays, I like, sometimes it just doesn't work out. I mean, I'm sorry. Are there any other things to be said about the calendar?
I can't make the twenty-second of September.
Well, I, the other thing, of course, it goes back to my suggestion that we have two meetings in August and having two meetings in September is a little problematic because it will, we're going to run into a conflict with the back-to-school nights, which I know, I don't believe the dates have been set up.
Well, hopefully they won't be on Thursdays.
Well, they're always, they're almost always on Thursdays.
Are they always on Thursdays?
So by having one meeting, say, in the middle of September, that at least frees up. And again, if we did, you know, an early, an early August.
Well, it's not substantially different than our schedule from last year. I mean, let's start with that. I mean, it's not, I don't think we added an extra date in September. I think that's what we did last year, pretty much. I don't think we reinvented the wheel yet.
We had two last year, that's why.
We had two in September and that's why we did it. So, you know, it may very well be that that's a good fit. If they're having the back-to-school night, maybe we can go to that and then come over to the meeting. I mean, I don't have a problem with this, so.
Yeah, I only, I actually only have, we must have changed the meeting because I only have one school committee meeting.
You know, we had one on, on the third and the twenty-fourth and.
So I'm missing that one on my calendar.
Okay.
Take it back.
Very good, fair enough.
But I can't do the twenty-second, so I don't know what. September twenty-second.
You can't do September twenty-second. All right.
And I actually checked, there's no, any Jewish law.
And I want you to know, we checked it too, Barbara, to make sense of it. Okay, so just so you know, you weren't the.
Expressing.
You didn't have to worry about that.
Do we want to look at another date for the twenty-second?
I didn't check my calendar, but check. All right, okay, so for September, another date other than the twenty-second. What was, what was the first date that we had?
The eighth.
The eighth? Well, all right, so why don't we do the twenty-ninth then? All right. Micromanage it, but let's do the twenty-ninth. All right, anything else? Is that, has amended? All right, will someone make a motion to accept the calendar?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? That passes. And then, all right, so now we will turn to the minutes of the last, our last meeting. Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes?
Yes.
Are there any changes? Okay, would someone like to make a motion to accept the minutes? All those in favor? That passes. Personnel, there are some resignations, Dr. Lally?
Yes. So we have a paraprofessional who was with us a short time, but he was, he did a great job, Ryan Baker. So he is moving closer to his home. And Julian Flannery is also taking a job closer to her home because she was traveling a good distance. And Lindsay Daniels is, I believe, going to help, but they're paying a little more, like ten thousand. Anyway, so a good amount, so it's a good, good thing for her.
And you're not prepared to talk about the new hires? Is that fair to say on the other?
Right.
Okay.
Do we have summer hires yet? You know, summer school and all this.
Those are coming.
Okay, now, is there any old business? New business?
No, all set.
You're all set? Oh, that is marvelous. So I don't know if anyone's following the Brexit issue there in England, but it's very interesting.
Are they reporting anything?
They are reporting. It was very close. Let me see what the latest figure is, just so that we can, it'll be totally dated by the next day. Wow, fifty-two point seven percent to leave the European Union.
Okay.
And forty-seven point three to remain. That's with, that's with ten percent of the vote in. That's interesting.
That is.
Anyway, the, when, don't go by that. It's just the ten percent of the vote in. There's another ninety percent of this. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? This meeting is adjourned.